Welcome to our June 2, 2015 Gilbert Town Council Study Session. We begin by introducing two individuals who are introduced at the MAG Economic Development Committee meeting today, right here in the center. Come on up, Cora. And so, Skye and Cora, representing our Native American Internship Program, welcome. And if those who are here in council chambers could give them a nice Gilbert welcome.[35.04][35.04](APPLAUSE). Two introductions in one day. We'll meet in a couple of hours for your third one. Thanks. Council members and those in council chambers, those watching, normally we begin by going right to our Thursday night agenda. And the reason for a shift is because we're focused on Thursday night budget. And the first two agenda items have some budget considerations to them. And then when we get to agenda item number three, that will be the first thing I bring up is budget. If there's any budget items to discuss, so we'll focus on budget first. And then we'll, on item number three, I'll come back and ask if there are certain agenda items you'd like to discuss. And then basically, we'll end after that. So on the first presentation, Andy, let's go ahead and get it up on the screen. You'll have me participating a little bit. And the reason why is that, working with Andy, working with Jessica, I said I would help best I could. And so, let's go Needs Assessment Initiative. Let's go to the next slide. And we have three initiatives, and yet this morning, we've added one. And so, I don't know if it's 3.5, and we ran it up to four, but I'll tell you more about that when we get to number three. And so, there's going to be three different presentations. The first one, some of you have heard about, and we want to make sure all council members are up to date, and that now it's available for the public to know about, the Gilbert Wellness and Resource Center. After that presentation, and Andy, let's go back one more minute, real fast. After that presentation, we'll pause and see if there's dialogue, discussion, and then we'll move into the second initiative, the Behavioral Health and Substance Use. Same thing at the end of that discussion. We'll pause, see if there's any discussion, and then we'll do our third discussion, nonprofit support, and then we'll have discussion after that. So, we are now ready. Initiative number one, at least in this presentation. Trinity, our CEO of the Chandler Christian Community Center, and Kathleen, our Director of Community Integration and Dignity Health, welcome. It's good to have you here. We turn the time to the two of you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Lewis and council, for giving us this opportunity to speak to you about the Gilbert Wellness and Resource Center. And today, we're just going to give you a brief overview of the concept, the inaugural partners, the initiating services, and the location, and a little bit about our next steps as well. Next. So, the concept overview for the Gilbert Wellness and Resource Center is really a collaborative opportunity with experienced and respected nonprofit agencies to help address some of those needs that were identified in the Gilbert Needs Assessment in 2014. This clinic/resource center will provide resources ongoing for the population in Gilbert. It also demonstrate what we consider an collective impact for the constituency that we're serving, in that we want to be able to move the needle and help them so that they gain information, when they need information on where to go, that when they need services, that they have that availability to get those services, or we get them there for those services as well. And the one thing about this model is it is unique. For many years, organizations have gotten together and provided, gotten nonprofit entities and agencies together, but it's not often that you get collaboration between what we would consider the government, or governance of the community, yourselves, the healthcare partners, the hospitals, and the community partners. Our inaugural partners who have been committed to this project as of today are Chandler Christian Community Center, Mission of Mercy for Medical Services, Southwest Behavioral Health, Public Health Dental Services Prevention, Dignity Health, and our Community Education Services, as well as Oral Health, and Goodwill has committed as well. We have other partners that will be a part of the project, and we anticipate year two. Initial services that we are looking at include Resource Center Programming and Resources, medical services for adult and children, preventative dental services for children, behavioral health services, community education, and workforce development. And now, I'm going to allow Trinity to cover more about the location.
Great, thank you. Well, I really appreciate your time as a council to discuss these issues, and really looking at how you not only underwent a needs assessment, but you're also discussing how to put that needs assessment into action. So, thank you for that. We've been looking at the Page Park Center, which is close to the Gilbert Community Center Boys and Girls Club area that's currently vacant. So, to be able to utilize a building that's underutilized right now, and part of the reason it's underutilized is because of some of, some needed repairs and enhancements to the building. So, this is a great opportunity for the town to be able to use community development block grant funds to do renovations to the facility that will allow it to be up and running for the variety of services that Kathleen mentioned. So, you've received a copy of our draft business plan, and so, some of the next steps is to finalize that business plan, and then you'll have additional conversation at your June 25 Town Council meeting. We've had many meetings. We had a series of weekly meetings with the partners and others who were potentially interested to create that business plan and draft information so that we're all on the same page. And it's been a great, great working environment for the nonprofits, for Dignity Health and other medical providers, and town staff as well, to clarify what we see the Wellness and Resource Center being.
Thank you. Let's go back that one slide. So, to the council, this will be a keep, an agenda item on June 25th, to give official approval. For today, a reason to, we've had some information, is to go another step, make sure that we're all seeing it and understanding it. And if there's any feedback we need to give before June 25th, that right now would be a good time. So, based on what you've heard, what you've seen, with this quick presentation today, are there any items, any council members would like to ask about today? So, to the two of you, thank you. This is great vision, and wonderful things will be coming from it, and we look forward to the June 25 discussion. Thank you. Second initiative is our Behavioral Health and Substance Use. And Andy, let's go one more. At our last study session, we ran out of time. And the rude mayor said, "Andy, you'll have to wait till the next study session." And so, that is today. And when we had our summit two months ago-ish, this is the summary for any of the council members who are not able to attend. And then, we have a proposed next step, which will be new information for the council. So, after Andy finishes, between the two of us, we'll talk about Part B, which is the next step. So, Andy, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and council members. So, just to provide an overview, last August during your council retreat, you asked staff to follow up on one of the recommendations in the needs assessment, to take an active role with the community to recognize the need for behavioral health and substance abuse treatment options within the community. And so, to follow up on that direction, we got together and brought together community leaders to talk about issues related to behavioral health and substance use, and have a conversation from the different perspectives of industry experts, and businesses, and community leaders, to talk about the gaps and the challenges and the solutions that we might have to address behavioral health and substance abuse in our community. So, we had approximately 30 attendees, and we had a great morning, small group, roundtable sessions, and attendees from a number of different organizations, from elected officials, schools, University of Arizona, Arizona State, and first responders. So, a wide range of perspectives that joined us. And as a part of that discussion, what came out of that was, we had Julie Landsberg, who was our excellent facilitator, help dialogue, and the groups all came back together, and we identified several key themes, ranging from generating and bringing about more awareness and education, to infrastructure and some policy discussions that maybe should take place, and resources. So, from those key themes, there is now a suggested next step as a follow-up to this initial dialogue, which is to form a stakeholder group with some specific goals that tie back into that initial roundtable, in terms of trying to follow up and move the discussion to the next step. So, Mayor, turn that.
Thank you. This is brainstorming that occurred, and just at a high level, I'll go a bullet at a time. The Arizona Criminal Justice Commission is currently able to help organizations, communities that want help with this topic. They have tools, they have information, and they have volunteered to help us. And so, part of our brainstorming is to say that we accept their willingness to help us. The second bullet, part of Gilbert ICANN, and this is a subset, it's not completely what Gilbert ICANN is, but part of it is a, there's a Coalition for Youth Substance Abuse that is helping Chandler residents deal with that issue. And so, they've also volunteered to give us some of the things they've learned, some of their best practices, and to assist us. The third bullet, to our Gilbert police team, this is something that, when you're talking to Chief Dorn, has been a major concern. And he attended the summit, we were at the same table, I had a chance to get a lot of feedback from him on that day, and understood some of his feelings, that as he has been involved in this topic and reaching out to other communities, it's a tough issue, and he does want to do some things in Gilbert to make a difference. He did give me a statistic, and this has to do with some of the reasons why he's concerned, that 4.9% of our Gilbert youth have some involvement with heroin. In some cases, it's very severe addiction, in other cases, it's still in the experimental stage. And so, it's really hard to get into specifics about what level, other than to say, based on current estimates, that that's a figure that has greatly concerned Chief Dorn. The second thing, just for the council to be aware, is that the police department has been talking about initiatives, things that they could do to help increase prescription drug, drop-off options, and so, that's listed too. The next bullet, from the summit, that was clearly a recommendation from those who were there, that we could do more, and there were many who volunteered. And so, we have a preliminary list of individuals who volunteered, and they fall into categories of individuals that are very knowledgeable and skilled with the medical aspect of behavioral health and substance abuse. School district hearing officers are also actively involved in our schools with this, government agencies that have said they would help, including the Arizona Criminal Justice Commission. And so, what is being proposed is that we take from the summit, a group of about 15, give or take, you know, 14, 15, 16, somewhere in that range, form three teams, and when the stakeholder group would meet, there would be assignments to the three teams that could be in smaller groups that they would work on between meetings, which goes to the next bullet, that the scope of what is proposed is that the stakeholder group would move forward with this initiative for the next year. They would have quarterly meetings. And the last bullet would be, just so the council would know that the thoughts of all those bullets will be put in writing, so that the scope of the stakeholder group will be formulated. I maybe finalized July, August, so that we could then announce who will be on the teams, and when the quarterly meeting will take place, the first one. So, let me just stop for a minute. From the summit, you may have some questions that Andy brought up, and then this is the recommendation as far as moving forward with this initiative. Councilmember Daniels.
Andy, based on this recommendation, what's our goal? What's our final, what do we hope our final outcome to be a year from now?
Would you like to take a, that's part of the second last bullet of, no, just the last bullet, is that's been discussed, and we'd like to further refine that. And in addition to that question, if there are some things from the council that could help in the formulation, obviously, some of the measurements, that 4.9%, we'd love to see lower. One of the slides that Andy had, as far as several things that were suggested, even awareness, that's hard to quantify and maybe have a measurement, but there are some things that were given from the summit that we would then put into goals, but as of this point, we haven't reached that point, we haven't reached specifics. Great question. Thank you.
Mayor, I'm really happy to see this move forward. A couple of months ago, Chief Dorn and I sat down and talked about some of this, and he shared how this is coming together. One thing that I asked him, and he kind of deferred to this, is in terms of how we can, what budget impact, if any, might there be? So, when I look at the timeline here, I'm just wondering if there's any way to dial that up a little bit more, so that we can hand off any budget recommendations to Patrick and his team? Because July, August, that might be too late for us to approve anything for the, for me, this is a big priority, and I'm, you know, as fiscally conservative as anybody here, but I'm willing to spend money in this area, because it really is damaging our youth. And maybe if we can escalate some of those budget impacts earlier for us to consider, if any, maybe there's not a lot, but I'd like to see that for next year's budget, if possible.
Thank you. To Town Manager Banjo, that is a wonderful request. I don't know, we could do some estimates, or I know that we have allowed for contingency, and that's where we might have to use some funds, but do you have any comments on that question?
Yeah, Mayor Member, Councilmember Taylor, we can certainly look at it, but that's why we budget for contingency in the manner in which we do. So, when we get to a number, we could just bring that forward for a contingency request with all the supplemental information for your decision.
I do appreciate the enthusiasm, though, Councilmember Taylor, that, I know your love for the youth of our community, too. That number kind of just hits right there. Yeah, okay, thank you. Other comments from the council? Councilmember Cook?
I'd like to volunteer on one of those teams.
Andy, we have another volunteer. Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank Andy and commend her for the job that she did on putting this report together that she mailed to us mid-May, because I was there at the summit, and the information that was gathered was a lot. I can't even really put into terms how much came from all of the tables there, and the report that you gave us was just excellent. So, I wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. So, with the council's permission, we will proceed. And I know we don't have any formal voting, but I'm looking to my right and left, and it looks like we'll proceed. All right, Andy, next slide. Okay, who's going to do this presentation? Looks like I got elected to our town manager, and to our deputy manager, I've got your back at this point, so. That's right. A reason, and Andy and Jessica could easily be up here, but this is trying to give some summary comments from a council member perspective, and so, I will do that. Summary of the needs assessment that we received was that they felt like our basic needs had been funded. The gaps existed, the appropriate amount of support to give is a question we've continued to ask, not only before the needs assessment, and that was really a driver of the needs assessment, but even after we received it, and I think we're still asking that question. At our last study session, some of the funding options presented, continue to do the drawdown for the general fund, maintain last year's funding level, which was more at the basic needs, and then another discussion was increase support to address some of the gaps. This was something that I asked the question of Andy and Jessica, based on the last study session, based on feedback you have received from the council, what is it we're trying to achieve? And so, there are four bullets. The topic of domestic violence and enhancing support was clearly communicated at our last study session. The desire to minimize general fund expenditures for nonprofit support has been something that has been discussed the last few years, and continues to be something that is a council request. There also has been the continued desire, kind of a combination of the second bullet, that to find ways to minimize the impact on general fund, but to continue to have funding sources for our Gilbert nonprofit needs. And appreciation goes out to many of our team members to my left, who have helped with Neighbor to Neighbor, who share my stamp, to Councilmember Peterson. I know there's a whole room full of Forest City volunteers, and even on a couple of our major days, there would be so many that wouldn't fit in in this room, and thank you for your continued leadership there. And so, that has been a desire, that if those two could merge, if we had ways to fund all of the nonprofit needs and meet the gaps, that would bring two and three together, the two and three bullets together. And that comes to the last one, that there are council members that have also said from the needs assessment, we do see some of the gaps, and we'd like to do a little more than just the basic needs. And there was even some feedback that went to Andy and Jessica, that if it's possible, those nonprofits that have expressed and given us feedback to say we can help with the needs assessment, based on that list, council members have said, maybe we can't fund everything, but if we could fund some for all, that has been expressed. Now, I want, as council members, because I'm going to reference this slide, and I may come back to it if we need to, but if you take those four bullets, it's, it is a challenge to come up with an answer that meets all four. And yet, I'm taking a stab at it. Now, first, I go to domestic violence. There's a sheet of paper, and Councilmember Taylor, this is something that was sent to us yesterday. There's three copies, you can go this direction to Councilmember Cook, there's two copies by the San Francisco Giant Cup, that you can go to you and Councilmember Peterson. Remember, Town Manager Banjo, I've got your back. And on this particular sheet, at the request from our last study session, Jessica did reach out to all of the groups that had said they could help with our needs assessment, and asked the question, based on last year's results to the Gilbert clients and families and individuals, were some tied to domestic violence? And so, that column you see is that, this is a summary on this PowerPoint slide, is that many were. And then, of course, in some cases, it's hard to answer that question, and some we're not able to. But this is the, for the council members who have received the detailed summary, for those here in council chambers, for those watching through the Internet or on the cable channel, this is the summary of the feedback we received. The next slide, and this is where, when this discussion started, and I said that we had three initiatives, this is where maybe we're at a 3.5, and we could run it up to four. We had a meeting yesterday, and when I say we, some of our town leadership, with Councilmember Cook, myself, with the Arizona Foundation for Women, and great discussion. Part of that discussion was through Councilmember Cook's leadership, there was another question that Jessica asked, of our providers for our needs assessment, the nonprofit support groups, and this is the question. And the question ties to, if domestic violence is something that we put as a higher priority with funding, what funds would you request? And this is something the council's not yet seen, but in our discussion yesterday, there was a five-page summary of feedback from our various groups that was, I'd probably just use the phrase, inspiring, and things that they thought they could do. Some involved quite a bit of money, some involved very little money, but it was still back to some of the things that could happen right here in our local Gilbert community to help families, individuals struggling with domestic violence. And so, what came out of discussions yesterday, and by the way, the responses from that question included some funding figures, programming information, client success stories, two larger systematic issues, and this is the last bullet. And this is what, when we ended yesterday, and if I were to go back to Initiative Two and say, is there a council member that has been assigned to take a lead role in representing the seven of us on the Behavioral Health and Substance Use, that would be the mayor, assign the mayor. On this particular topic, through discussions yesterday, as you have seen as a council, Councilmember Cook has displayed great passion for this, and in conversation this morning, accepted an assignment to be our liaison on this topic. Now, because the discussion was yesterday, and this gets even more to some of the questions we might ask, well, what does this mean? But we talked about also forming, and I don't know if it's stakeholder group, but I'll use that term for right now, a stakeholder group, and it would probably be regional, and whether that's East Valley or even greater. We do have a MAG domestic violence organization that Councilmember Cook is part of, and we have town staff part of that. They could be an influence on this. But that's where we left our discussion yesterday. So, it's new information, it is something that, at this point, and Councilmember Cook, I'm going to ask you to, you know, add some of your feelings and comments, but there are some funding requests that were given, but I think for today, it's so early in trying to formulate a next step, and yet, the excitement is there, and we have information, and we have volunteers, some who are here in council chambers, that would be willing to help us. So, it's not a funding request today. It would probably be similar, Councilmember Taylor, to the last discussion, that maybe there's some contingency funds that could be asked, or maybe it's to study it, and that could be part of next year's discussion. But Councilmember Cook, at this point, Gilbert leadership would be under your direction. What additional comments would you like to make?
Well, thank you, Mayor, and for the council, and I really need to thank staff with Andy and Jessica. They've just been outstanding in trying to help identify, you know, from programming to funding sources, how, you know, we as a community can help those who are less fortunate through domestic violence. And it's a very painful area in our community, but it is something that, as I feel strongly about having a drug-free high school campus, I would love to have a sign in front of Gilbert that says we are a domestic free, domestic violence-free community. So, you know, the goal would be to try to make that zero. And my involvement with the MAG Domestic Violence Committee is hopefully going to, is from a regional perspective, hopefully guide that team toward that. So, again, this is all fairly new. We did meet with the Arizona Women's Foundation Organization, which seems to be very involved in this area for state level, with a lot of private and public organizations that they can rally to help us in that formulation of that strategic plan or strategy, and how we might be able to address this. So, I look forward to representing our community in this area and leading the way for this. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Kathy, let me, did Vice Mayor Ray just join us? And Jordan, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you for joining us, and appreciate your sacrifice to get to a spot where you can call in. The spot we're at on the study session is agenda item number one. There are three initiatives. We've completed the first two, and we moved to a new one. And you were just on the tail end of it, but it would, the summary I would give is to form a domestic violence stakeholder group, and it's been discussed in the last 24 hours, so it needs some more refinement, but that might be the same sort of timeframe that in July, August, we would want to formulate the specific scope of that. So, to council members, how do you feel? Is that something that you can support? And realizing that there's more details you need to see, but at this point, at least taking the next step, any concerns, or are you ready to have Councilmember Cook proceed? To Vice Mayor Ray, we have what it looks like is thumbs, not necessarily thumbs up, but if we put thumbs up, I would say thumbs are up. So, okay.
My thumb is up.
My thumb is up.
All right, thank you. Now, the next slide is back to this document, and where we had the slide of council requests had to do with domestic violence, and so at this point, I kind of shift that to the side because I think we have an action item there. Reducing general fund expenditures for the support, increasing neighbor-to-neighbor support, Share My Stamp, other initiatives, including the Parks and Rec discussion, which will be coming up. But this is, this first bullet is what appears on the sheet. And here's the background. When I went to Andy and Jessica and asked the question, we have feedback. We have feedback from the council. We have feedback from our human resource, our Human Relations Commission, excuse me. We have feedback from other groups that have been asked to help us with this question of what is the appropriate amount for nonprofit support. And also, you are actively involved in reading, understanding, dissecting the needs assessment. You have a sense of what the council is trying to do. What is your recommendation? And this is the feedback that was received, taking all of the sources from Gilbert that have been asked to be involved with this. And this is not any of the options from last time, because I think option, this is probably option 3.1. It wasn't option four. And so this is our team members saying, this is what we think will fill some of the gaps. It's not entirely what was requested. It does meet the basic needs and takes us a couple of additional steps. And there's an assumption, and let me just continue on with those next bullets, that neighbor-to-neighbor marketing efforts, a couple of you, realizing that I can only talk to two council members before we bring it to a public setting, knew that I was quite excited within the last couple of weeks, and that excitement, it's not that it changed to non-excitement, but it changed yesterday. And so let me give you an update on that. The excitement was that we were starting to have discussions about increasing our neighbor-to-neighbor marketing efforts and how we could do that. And part of that was tied to, when I talked to individuals about supporting our nonprofits, very positive response. One of the big challenges has been, it's not easy to do. And so there were discussions about how to make it easier. And with that, the thought was, let's take another round and take our 75,000 customers in the utility system and make calls to them, and to have additional information, and then provide an opportunity where we have volunteers that have said they would come and help make phone calls. And yesterday, in discussing this with our legal team, where we thought it was 100% green light, we did find a state statute, and I understand this, that was very specific in saying that you cannot use utility billing systems to extract addresses and names and so forth to make contact. And that happened yesterday afternoon. Now, my face did go down a little bit, but of course, there's always hope. And there are other ways, and it could be, we can buy lists. It could be that if it were appropriate, that some of our neighborhood communities do have lists, and I don't, this is brainstorming at this point. We have not made contact, and whether that is appropriate, they may have some of the same guidelines, or they can't be sharing those lists. But there still could be ways. Our local, our internal teams have been doing more marketing, but I've just felt like our neighbor-to-neighbor will really need maybe some one-on-one contact. It will need a way that's very easy, so that if someone verbally said they'd like to participate, that we'll find a way to make it happen just like that, without the process where they have to go out to the, our website, find the right page, which sometimes has been hard for people to do, and then find their account number and put it in. And so there's still hope with this. But I did want to be clear with the council that, at least with two of you, that I had expressed great excitement, knowing that we could get a lot of volunteers and that wouldn't happen overnight. But in a season, which might be defined a six months, a year, maybe two years, that the feeling was that we could probably contact all 75,000 customers for new citizens coming in, have a way to make it easier for them. So that's in limbo today, but it's not, it's still a thought, because for council members taking the council requests, I think that we would be very excited if there was a way to find funding resources where coming from general fund would be zero. I think as a council, we would be thrilled. So I don't have that answer yet today. Share My Stamp continues to be very popular, and so, and almost to a level where we could count on it, and I know there's no guarantees of any of this, but there's at least a trend that tells us there's a good source of funding that we could count on for some of this. The second agenda item in our study session today, we'll come back to this. This was talked about last meeting, so we'll come back to it. And then, of course, bringing this up and brainstorming, there are ideas that maybe we haven't thought of. I will say that some of the ideas that I've discussed with some of you, there are some constraints with moving forward, because some of our nonprofits are already doing some of those suggestions. And so it's not that we want to, all of a sudden, become the funding source through various activities, because we want to let the nonprofits do that. We want to give our support, but if there are other ways that are easy for us to do, we want to find those ways. The, well, that was the last bullet. So this slide took the council requests, where domestic violence was the prior slides, at trying to minimize the general fund, but at the same time, find other funding sources, and at the same time, trying to meet some of the gaps. And so this is the point where I turn to council and look for some input from some of you. It doesn't necessarily, and let me, the note I just see to Vice Mayor Ray, if there are any items that you wanted to comment on at this point, please do so. You may not be in a position to be able to do that, seeing that you have another important activity to get to, but is there anything you wanted to state at this point?
Thank you, Mayor, for the microphone. And first off, thanks to Councilmember Cook for his leadership with the domestic violence. I think that everyone on the council cares much about that, and there's been lots of talk about it now. There's some great action happening, so thank you, Councilmember Cook, for that. As far as the funding goes, this has been something that we've obviously talked about for a long time, and we've gone towards the drawdown, and I think that was, I don't think it was the council's goal to do that. I share some of the same concerns that I believe, Mayor, you share, and some of the other council members, that the funding hasn't been replaced with, the town's funding hasn't been replaced with other funding as all of us had hoped. And so I am still, I have great concern over the funding and having it come from general fund. I think that we made great progress. I appreciate Councilmember Victor Peterson's efforts with the nonprofits. He's been a great leader on that. But to be quick about it, I'm leaning towards option C, assuming that's still the option that was talked about before with the $417,000 funding. And part of that has to do with, we haven't backfilled that funding like we thought, but also because the council has given a little bit more direction with the needs assessment and what is needed there. And once we found out what's actually needed within the town, or at least a better idea, and then, you know, we've given direction to go towards that, I think that option C is the best step to both continue the direction we've gone, but also at the same time, helping to fund those, some of those nonprofits that were, showed the direct need from the town. So I'm leaning towards option C with that, at that 417 level, and that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you. And Vice Mayor Ray, if you need to leave at any time, please sign off. I see the note, and I'll keep this personal, but there would be, just so the council knows, an urgency, and Vice Mayor Ray signing off in a minute. So stay on as long as you can. So other council member comments? Let's, Councilmember Peterson, let's just start and go this direction.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to hear from Councilmember Cook first, because I was listening to his leadership on the domestic violence issues, and he was very vocal at our last study session. So I wanted to see where he stood at this point with the option of, let's say, 3.1 or C, as Vice Mayor Ray offered, and then maybe I'll follow up with some comments, if that's okay?
Vice Mayor Cook, please. Or, excuse me, Councilmember Cook.
Well, thank you for inviting me to speak. You know, we usually go in order, but that's fine. I anticipated this. As we chatted in the last meeting, what was really important for me, and I think as it related to the needs assessment, was that we began to look at prioritizing, you know, those needs that were of really, really high importance. And I know that the families in crisis was extremely high on that list, and domestic violence was, you know, one of those few points that were there that was very highlighted in that aspect. So Jessica and Andy spent a lot, a lot of time going back with the current applicants on the list, and identified, and you have them in front of you, identified those agencies that do provide really the needs to fulfill, you know, part of our families in crisis priority, especially with domestic violence. So they went back and identified those agencies, and also ranked them with a percentage of Gilbert domestic violence victims. Is that how that column is? And put some percent numbers on there for where they're at currently. But what was really nice for me to see is that we can actually increase our funding for those agencies, because they would fulfill and move us forward toward providing assistance in the area of domestic violence. So I'm very grateful for the staff to share that with us. Now, I know there's some other numbers that the mayor and I learned yesterday that's actually much, much larger than these numbers that are here today, that show us the real pain in this area where there is lack of funding in domestic violence. And I'm not going to make a, as much as I would like to make a proposal for those larger funds, I think we need to be more strategic as it relates to the programming of that, and that's the reason why I decided to take the assignment to help lead a better understanding and a better strategic plan toward this. But there are greater funds that are needed in domestic violence here, especially in the East Valley. So with that, I know it's a long answer, but anyways, the $417,000 has been a number that was identified through the analysis, and as I shared with the team and the mayor, that I would be very in support of that moving forward.
There's another comment that I skipped over, increased volunteer support. Let me just add, in conversation with Councilmember Peterson, to Forest City, there have been some inspiring activities that have taken place, and there are faith groups, there are businesses, there are community organizations that want to do more. One of the things that we talked about in the last few days was going back to all of the groups that have made requests and asking this question, if we were able to help facilitate, and Forest City would be a great organization to do that, what I would call very specific volunteer support. So more than just, on this day, can we come and paint these rooms? Could we come and clean up a yard? It's, almost is what I would call staff. If we were able, on two days a week, or so many hours a week, provide volunteers from the community, would that put you in a position where your request for some of the needs could be lowered? And so I think that's something that we want to do in the next year in preparation for what will happen in our next budget cycle, and I think, as Jessica's done so well with the great relationship with these groups, that that's something that these organizations that are so active in Forest City would be willing to do. So other comments from the council? Councilmember Peterson.
Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank everyone for their kind words. Sometimes I think my public votes can be misinterpreted, that I don't care for the needs of others, but I do, I do so deeply. And a lot of the reasons why I have pushed for reductions in tax dollars going to those purposes is based on principles and things I believe in. And so, you know, those things haven't changed for me, so my position on it really hasn't changed much. I remain committed to continuing to create as much voluntary support of these organizations and causes as possible. And so I'm excited to tell you, there are some initiatives coming online, some organizations that are plugging into the volunteer effort. They could be very significant in their impact, and so we're working with them right now. And so I think there's still a lot of possibility, and we're going to keep working on that. And as you mentioned, we're happy to help any way we can with the voluntary support. So with that, I'm still, you know, in support of our original plan, but I appreciate the thoughts and kind comments of others.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor, what are your feelings?
Mayor, thank you for letting me share a couple of things. One is, when I think of this topic, I'm looking for something that changes the, more of a game-changing plan, and I don't really see it here. I see that we're just kind of reversing course, in a way. And you and I have had a lot of discussions. I haven't been able to share those ideas with others, and maybe if I can just share at least what I would propose on this in two ways. And you've heard some bits and pieces of this. Number one is get rid of the food tax. That is a great way to directly impact all Gilbert residents and a higher proportionate impact on those in need. It's a proven model to help, it would probably four or five, increase the contribution four or five times what the number is that we're seeing here. Had some preliminary discussions with Don, so when we talk about increasing, that's one way that we can do it. I don't say, it's obviously too late to do it for this year, but maybe over the next year, we study that and understand how we can do that, because, you know, domestic violence is important, it's a priority, but other people have other priorities. You know, food is a major issue as well. Money is sometimes what some people need. They don't need domestic violence support. And to me, it's just a more fair application across. So that would be, that would be part one of my proposal. Two would be, maybe just in the spirit of compromise, and either the pure step down to where we are today is, you know, we've shared a couple of ideas. Number one is, what we would do is, we would take what the five-year step down would be as right now, and Andy was giving, kind enough to give me the number here, so 147,500 would be what would, it would be general fund this year. If we add the Share My Stamp, Neighbor to Neighbor, 50,000 on top of that, we're looking at about 197 even. If we round it up to 200, let's just say, that's what we cap, the general fund plus neighbor-to-neighbor contributions at right now. So at least agencies have some commitment of Gilbert year over year. And then we have a good commitment to growing neighbor-to-neighbor, growing Share My Stamp, and that income can supplement what the general fund's doing until that goes down to zero, and then once it bounces off the floor, it just continues to increase and benefit those nonprofits more and more every year. Because maybe there's an annual or a semi-annual event that we, you know, work with our faith communities and other communities to really increase the enrollment on those programs. And so while the general fund is capped, taxpayers, you know, have some limit there, the benefit to the nonprofits long-term is unlimited at that point. So I guess that's where I'm at on this, is I think that meets the spirit and letter of what we, the original five-year plan, but it also gives some sustaining commitment. of what we, the original five-year plan, but it also gives some sustaining commitments to some of our agencies, but also commits, you know, with the food tax going away, that could benefit the whole town, those that don't really have ready access to the services in North Gilbert. So, those are my thoughts on where I think we should go to kind of change the discussion and still address the point issues on the table.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you, Mayor. This needs assessment, I think, opened up a lot of doors for us as a community and it allowed us to catch glimpses of needs that I think we either didn't know exist or existed or perhaps underestimated. And in some cases, we overestimated a need. And I love the fact that this needs assessment has allowed us to redirect our attention and our energy and our efforts and, quite frankly, our funding to where it needs to be. When I look at this list of priorities, I kind of put them in three separate categories. The first one, obviously, being families in crisis, of which I include those who are victims of domestic violence. I look at our vulnerable populations, our elderly and our youth. That's another category where I see us, particularly as I've gone, you know, thread by thread in that needs assessment, to try to understand what it is and what challenges do we have, not just today, but what challenges do we have as a community looking forward. And then the last one is crisis prevention. So, before those families get into a crisis situation, are there things that we can be doing? Chief Dorn generally doesn't get these individuals until they are in total crisis. And there's a lot that we can do before we get to that level. And as we all know, when it gets to a crisis-type level, it's far more expensive, far more time-consuming and far more difficult to correct. And so, I do see that opportunity that as we direct these funds, I'm pleased to see that this $417,000 recommendation, which, of which I am in support of, really does look at all three of what I would consider to be our high priority areas as a community. And so, I voted for the drawdown. I remember those conversations. I also remember the very difficult decisions and cuts that we made in 2009 when we had $15 million to cut out of our budget. And those were hard conversations that we went line by line through the budget. I think that we will, by approaching this from both a prevention and a proactive side, which we now can do with a needs assessment, I think we will have far more impact in the long-term in this community by making sure that we are looking through these windows and really taking a proactive approach from this point forward. And so, for that reason, among all those that I stated, I am in support of this proposal and thank you for the effort and the time. Volunteers will always be an integral part of this community and of our approach. And I hope that none of those comments minimize that effort. That is absolutely imperative, whether it be the Chamber for Good or serve.org or For Our City and all those different groups that come together to really buoy up our community. They all play an integral part of that. I hope not to minimize that, but dollars are also needed.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank Councilmember Cook for going ahead and going first as I asked, and I appreciate that. I also appreciate Councilmember Taylor's comments. I don't see this as us reversing course. I sat on the sidelines during the retreat last August while this council worked together and saw the results of the needs assessment and came up with a, developed a strategy to address the gaps that were identified at that time. And I think that this is a great way to address the gaps, those gaps that we have and for those needs. And I think a lot's been said already and I agree with what Vice Mayor said and what the other council members have said, Councilmember Daniels and Councilmember Cook. And I would also go ahead and support the recommendation for the $417,000. I believe that it's a great way to balance the interests of safeguarding our tax dollars and using them wisely while also addressing the critical populations in need.
Thank you. Here's the summary. And Councilmember Peterson, I think you said it so well. And sometimes people haven't seen your efforts with Forest City and they don't totally understand the good heart that you have to help meet these needs, and I thank you for that. Listening to this, I think we proceed with what's on the screen. And Councilmember Peterson, our September Faith Group Summit, I think we move forward to ask the question of our nonprofits before that time, if they could. And I know it's not going to totally reduce some of the financial needs because some volunteer support can't replace what the money needs are, but I think we go ahead and ask that question. If you had a certain number of volunteer hours that could be committed to every week, what would that mean as far as future funding? I think we continue best we can and that would, it would be a worthy goal if there were ways to get Neighbor to Neighbor to totally support all of the funding and that we would take general fund down to zero. I'd love to see that and I think the council would too. I'm not, I'm not sure if that's realistic in the next year, but let's keep trying. And so, I think I go back to Councilmember Taylor's comments that some of the things, if we can see a level that's more consistent, that some of the things you said, I think, apply and we can keep talking about it. In fact, so that we get it captured to our town leadership, Councilmember Taylor's comment about the food tax, I think already is an item that is being discussed, but let's just turn to our town manager again and make sure it's written down and that can be followed up as a discussion item. Thank you. With this on the screen, I'm not trying to rush this conversation. Well, there's two more things. One is the second to last dash, but before I get to that, for Thursday, we understand that for our budget, that last year's funding was put in, so there would be a shift already in some contingency. But the most important need for Jessica is to get moving on these contracts. And we don't have a council meeting until the end of June, and so she is in a position to probably get at least the two major contracts done by Thursday, so that could be included in our discussion. And Andy and Jessica, you can maybe clarify this. What would work, as we see the sheet, if we're just giving verbal approval, is that the other contracts could be set up in the next couple of weeks. And with the funding expenditure limit that the town manager has, he could be the one to sign off on them. And so, let me just see if that made sense and if the council's okay with that. And did I clearly state that? Okay. So, that would mean for Thursday, the two larger groups that we would have a contract to approve, the other contracts would be under the funding limit that our town manager could approve. Are you okay with that? Anyone that would have concerns with that? Okay, we'll proceed with that. The other item I want to bring up, the second to last bullet, this was brainstorming and Councilmember Cook, thank you for that, of other sources. Based on what was just decided, I'll just ask the open-ended question, because some of you expressed that the concern with doing that would be taking revenue sources from general fund and just moving them. I don't know if you still feel that way, but I'm now jumping to agenda item number two on the study session. Is that now something that we skip and just leave as an option for future discussions if we need it? And Councilmember Cook, let me go right to you because that was your brainstorming. How do you feel about that?
Well, it was really try to help, you know, provide additional revenues. If we're able to use the contingency funds, well, I know we set a limit on the upper budget and then I think through the budget process, we're not going to come near that limit, I think, because of some reduction. So, maybe, you know, the additional funding for the 417 might be from that, so maybe...
Would you like to have that discussion for a few minutes?
I think so, but I think probably this is not as, as critical as it was.
Let's go to the rest of the council. Would you like to have the discussion or do you feel like it's an option that could be considered if we needed it in the future? Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I think for today, it's probably not urgent, but I'm still interested in having that conversation eventually.
In August? So, possibly, I know we've got a retreat agenda that's, but maybe another study session?
Right. Just as an August meeting. And that'll prepare us if we want to do like a January launch or something like that. It makes it easy.
So, to our town leadership, not retreat, but at a study session. Okay, thank you. Let's go to agenda item number three and let's have the mayor sit down. As stated at the start of the study session, we did want to go to budget as the priority. And so, I started with this Councilmember Peterson. Let's start with this Councilmember Peterson. What budget items would be helpful to talk about today?
I just have a quick question. I don't know who to ask it about. It's item 37 about the CIP. It's related to the budget, of course. And I'm sure we have some busy staff members. So, just something I'm looking for, I'm just hoping I can get before Thursday, and I'm just going to ask directly. Is it possible to get a list? And of course, if it's helpful to the rest of the council, that'd be great for them to get it too, but a list of any projects that would never come back to the council for approval again. It's truly helpful when we're looking at a list of, I don't know how many projects, trying to, because I know some projects may not have any components that exceed the $100,000 threshold and require council approval. I know a lot of the projects will, and so they'll come back to the council anyway. For those, I don't want to spend too much brain power on them since we have so many things to sort through. So, if you could give me a list of those that will not have any future council approval, that would help me a lot. Does that make sense?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, Don Marie Buckland with the Office of Management and Budget. We'd be happy to take a look at that, our preliminary glimpse. We didn't see any that right off the bat would indicate we would not be bringing them back to council, but we'll confirm that and we'll be sure to have that for you, at least a confirmation if there are none on Thursday.
Sorry it took me so long for an answer that sounds like you've already handled, but the confirmation's great. Thank you.
And Don, on the subject of 37, and for the council here this too, I'd like to make the request that we do have a presentation on it on Thursday and five minutes or less so that the public in here too, the capital improvement project list is significant. And it would be nice just to get the overview of what's in it, maybe some of the key projects that'll be happening soon, some that are being delayed. And I know that's hard to do because it's a lot of information, but let's plan on that for Thursday night.
Mayor, Eliana Hayes, our CIP engineer, has a fantastic presentation ready for your review.
As expected. Thank you. Councilmember Cook?
And maybe you can also highlight, because the one gap for me, which Don's team was able to help me, was really identifying the big-ticket items related to the line item called non-departmental. And that was really important for me to see what those big-ticket items are. So, that might be a little beneficial to kind of share that with the team, you know, what those are.
Thank you. Other, Councilmember Peterson, did you have anything else on the budget?
I did, and I don't have a ton, so thank you for letting me proceed to the next one. Just wanted to address the tax levy. And I'm sorry, if you've replied to my voicemail that I left you by email, forgive me because I haven't even been able to check all that recently. But I noticed that there's a proposal on item 40 to use sum of fund balance to keep the rate down. And I love that, I appreciate that. I just wanted to get a little clarification on it though. Last year, when we were talking about the levy, I believe we added an extra 5%. I think the new state law that went into effect allows an additional 5% for delinquency. And we added that. As I look at this and we show a 1.6, we're contemplating using 1.6 million in fund balance. If I'm doing the math right, I don't think that is including a 5% contingency. What's the difference between last year and this year in that regard?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, that is absolutely an excellent question. Last year, as we looked at what an effective or reasonable delinquency rate would be, our financial advisor suggested a 5% delinquency rate. We were still coming out of a recessionary period, we were still seeing a lot of those delinquencies. Towards the end of last year, we started seeing, as properties were actually changing over, that leans on the property, we were already, we were starting to begin seeing some recovery on prior-year delinquencies that started to make that hole. Working with Deputy Town Manager Mark Sciosic, working with our financial advisors, our recommendation this year is to go ahead and just levy the amount that's needed, not adding in that additional 5% delinquency factor, based on the fact that we're now starting to see some of the prior-year delinquencies come in.
So, the new law that limits how much we can collect above the actual obligation does allow for a 5% contingency. So, when we're talking about using 1.6 of fund balance, we're talking about fund balance that's restricted because it was collected from property taxes previously, correct? So, it's restricted and can only be used to pay back voter-approved debt, correct? That's the fund balance. We're not talking about general fund. We're talking about the debt service fund balance, correct?
That is correct. I want to maybe separate the two items though because they are separate and distinct. We have fund balance that, if you recall, when we looked at the legislation a couple of years ago, we had the difference between being able to collect up to 13 months in advance of making the payment in some cases. Now, it has to be made within the exact same fiscal year. So, some of that fund balance though, that was collected at that point in time is not subject to those same restrictions. However, all of it, yes, does have to go towards repaying debt.
The reason I'm asking this, as I went through the CAFRA and studied this balance and I do understand that we have a portion that has an assignment. It's assigned for a future debt service payment. I think there's 1.3 million or so, so far towards a future large payment. But there's about 8.6 million of it that's, it's restricted, but it's unassigned. And I understand you're contemplating using about 1.6 of that. All I'm asking is, and I heard the comment that this is actually a tax cut, that the problem I have with that is the rate's going to go up and the total levy's going to go up from last year. They're both going up. And so, it's hard to call that a tax cut exactly. I understand it could go up more than what we're contemplating. We're contemplating using some fund balance, but I think it's a bit of a stretch to call it a tax cut. I would, I would like to propose that we would use a little more of fund balance, keep the total levy the same, the rate would drop just slightly. And then that way, we're at least not raising taxes, no one could argue that. And we're actually probably cutting taxes. And it's really the same in principle. We've got 8.6 million that can only be used to pay back this kind of a thing. That's all it can be used for. If we're worried about that balance getting too low, we've got 5% every year that we can recharge a little bit with, can't we? Can't that? We got a 5%, we can always collect 5% more than the obligation. Delinquency, the law allows for that, right? So, if that, that could carry over to the next year to be used for future years. So, couldn't that fund balance get recharged gradually year over year with that?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, I may have to defer to legal counsel on this one. However, my understanding of the law is that we have the ability to assign a reasonable delinquency factor, but I don't think we could continue to accumulate that year after year as I understand the law.
Okay. Well, either way, we have an ability to collect a little more than what we might need just in case, a contingency amount, okay? And my point being, that fund balance can't be used for anything else anyway. And my also, my point being, after this next year, the maximum level that we'll get for our debt service obligation in one year is 8-point-something million, or 18, sorry. It's below 19 million. So, my point is, if we get through this one year, there's never a need for us to even feel like we need to raise taxes either by a total levy or a rate. We get past it, then we're clear of that. And then, you know, for those of us who don't want to raise taxes, I just think, okay, all of us, I'm sorry. I'm not implying anything. Some of us may feel more passionately about it than others sometimes, maybe, depending on the situation. I don't know how you want me to say that to not offend, but at any rate, I think financially we can get past that and we should be fine, right?
Mayor, if I could just for a minute?
Please.
I fundamentally have a problem with a statement that you just made, only because you said, "We have an opportunity to collect more than what our obligation is in future years if we find that our emergency fund," you didn't say emergency fund, "but that our account gets too low," if you will. our account gets too low," if you will. That actually flies completely in the face of the law that we're trying to follow, which is that we only collect the amount that we are obligated to pay for debt service. And because of the way our debt is structured, our rate actually, levy, went down this past year and will increase in coming years. If we didn't have that sort of juggling act to do that was really handed to us, then our rate would either stay the same, or we would have an opportunity to drop that rate permanently in a permanent-type tax deduction, because we would have that account, and it's far more predictable. But I think what you're asking to do is to promote uncertainty amongst our accounts. And these are really, really important obligations that we have. Since we can only collect the amount that we owe that year, it's not a good plan to say, "Well, if our account drops too low, then next year, we can just collect a little more." That's not the way that that account works, and that's not the way that new state law works. And it really, it actually flies in the face, I think, of that state law to say, "Well, if we draw down that account too low, we'll just charge more next year." We only can collect what we owe for that next year's debt service payment.
So my understanding of the law is that that is not correct. There's a 5% additional you can collect for.
No, we have to.
We just did it last year.
We have to plan for a 5% delinquency rate amongst all of it, but that doesn't mean that we can charge 5% more across the board.
Okay.
I may be able to clarify that point specifically. It's not specific to 5%. The law does allow for a reasonable delinquency rate, but we had to assess what that was, get expert opinions to determine, based on our market, what that would be, and have a basis for assessing that particular delinquency rate.
All right. So forgive me. My point was still that we have the ability to handle some contingency. So we should be able to meet our obligations in future years. In fact, we have no specific plan for how we're going to use that fund balance. It's not assigned. It has no job. It's $8.6 million. It's sitting there. It can only be used to pay off voter-approved debt. We're planning on using 1.6 of it? I think that's great. That's all it can be used for, something like that.
What if our delinquency rate jumped one year because of a terrible economic downturn that I hope never happens again? But let's say that delinquency rate that we predicted to be at 5% jumps to 18%. That's when we're going to need that 8.6 million in order to be able to meet our obligation. So to say that it's not accounted for, or that it's just sitting there not doing anything, that's the only backup plan we really have for that, for those debt obligations.
So we also have millions in general fund balance for unexpected things, and we're going to keep that minimum reserves. We have options. And furthermore, hopefully, those same experts that analyzed and gave us the 5% are hopefully going to analyze and give us something reasonable. It may not be exact, but we've got other ways to pay that obligation. My point is, what's really the difference between using 1.6 of it and using 3 of it? I mean, it's not that much difference. And then we're not raising taxes. I'm just saying, we are raising taxes. We're raising the rate, and we're raising the total levy, period. It is what it is. There's no way to avoid it in this case. So I'm just saying, I like the concept. Let's go a little further with it. It's all I'm proposing.
We just, we're not raising what we owe. And I realize that we have to raise and lower the rate that we charge the residents because of that state law, but our obligations haven't changed. We haven't increased the amount of debt that we owe. And so I know it's a difficult concept, and it's going to be hard to explain to our residents as well, when they see that their bill goes up next year, and we're going to have to be sitting there having this conversation. It's going to go up whether we use 1.6 or whether we use 3. It's going to go up a little bit, no matter what, because of that state law. I just don't know that it's better for us, in the long run of Gilbert, to create more uncertainty. And the plan that I hear you proposing creates, in my opinion, more uncertainty as we move forward. What we're asking for is what we owe this year. And to change and mess with that, I don't know that that benefits the community as a whole in the long run. Sorry, Mayor, we're belaboring this point, but maybe you and I should have this, the rest of this offline. I just, I don't think creating, the state law created uncertainty for us. I don't know that we should be adding to that.
The 1.6 million we're deciding to use of that is set by somebody's decision. We didn't want the rate to rise above 1.15. There's nothing magical about using 1.6 of that fund balance. And we didn't say, "What can we afford necessarily?" We said, "By principle, we don't want the rate to go of 1.15." That's the calculation. And so I'm saying, it's hard to defend that exact number as being the only amount of that that we can use. I just don't understand.
That wasn't a number drawn out of the air. There was some rhyme and reason to that. Have you talked?
Well, historically, we've been at 1.15 for as many years as I can find the financial record of, except for last year. And I think that was the rationale for, at least based on what I read in the packet.
Deputy Manager, Mark?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, that is absolutely correct. The nexus to the 1.15 is when the bonds that we have recently sold in the last several years were, went to the voters, we promised them that 1.15 rate. That was what was in all of the pro formas that was sent out to all the voters when those bonds were approved. As Councilmember Daniels spoke about, the law last year, year before uncoupled that rate, and now it floats based on what the actual is due. So when staff made the recommendation that you see before you, it was based on going back to not exceeding that $1.15, that $1.15 rate, and using fund balance as the buffer, in this case, going for, you know, through to this next fiscal year. So that's the nexus to the $1.15.
And if I might add to that, too, Mayor, because I think it's an important point that Councilmember Peterson raises, we also looked at the availability of the fund balance. And as we looked at, again, going back to, what is a reasonable amount of fund balance to carry, to allow us to respond to emergency situations, to allow council to look strategically and plan for time to respond to those types of situations, the $1.6 million was within that window, basically, of what we thought would allow us to maintain a reasonable fund balance. When we looked at this last year, and we looked at what we were going to have to do, dropping that rate down from the 1.15 to the 1.0659, because just for that one year, we had that lower debt service payment. As we looked at that, we thought we were going to have to come back with a $1.31 rate this year, just to make that debt service payment. Council had numerous conversations with, and staff members as well, looking at, how could we make this right, make this better for our citizens and for our community? And based on your feedback and the work that you've done over the course of the last year and at the council retreat as well, we've been looking at all of these various options. Along with that, as we look at the change in valuation, the change in the way that they look at the primary versus a secondary assessed valuation, and as we looked at all the commercial activity that's been coming in, and new valuation that's here in this community that wasn't considered before, that 1.31 became 1.24. And as we looked at that 1.24, now, all of a sudden, that gets, that gets the council down to an area where not only could we bring it from 1.31 down to 1.25, but we can now bring it from 1.24 down to 1.15 and still maintain a fund balance. That would be a responsible fund balance for you to maintain in the years moving forward.
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. Question for Dawn. So why do we have what we have in that balance right now? Why is it 8 million?
Mayor, again, and I don't mean to repeat myself from earlier, so I don't know if there's a separate question, but as we looked at the way the fund balance was structured over the years before state law allowed us to collect 13 months in advance, our debt service payment for the upcoming year, as you know, is over $22 million. When we look at fund balance, that 8 million, it's not money that's just simply sitting there. It's basically saying that we, that's, we're collecting it about six months before we actually pay it. So it's not money that's just sitting there in static. We're actually collecting it six months before we pay it. In this particular case, in the past, we were able to do that because we could collect money in April for a payment that needed to be made in October, for example. We can no longer do that. So should we exhaust that fund balance now? We don't really have the ability, without using other funding sources, to restore it again in the future.
Mayor, if I may. I guess what I'm trying to understand is, what is the right number? You know, because that's really where Victor's going on the question, and is being challenged on that, is that's imprudent, and he thinks, what is the right number? I'm not sure what it is. You're the financial wizard here. And so is it 15? Is it 6? I mean, what is the right number, given the models and economic cycles that we've seen? What should we have in there?
Mayor, if you'd like, and Councilmember Taylor, we can pull something together over the course of the next couple of days. I think we can look at what is the right number in terms of what staff's recommendations would be financially, and tell you what that would afford you in terms of your flexibility and your options moving forward. At the end of the day, that becomes a policy decision, much like our minimum fund balance policy. What is that level that council is comfortable with, particularly knowing that this is a funding source that cannot be restored in the future?
Thank you, Dawn. Mayor, that would be helpful for me to understand. Is it really that risky, or is it something that's, you know, not, or something like that? What would the right answer be? What should our target be there? So, thank you.
Thank you. And was there anything else from our deputy manager that?
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I was going to add, and I appreciate Councilmember Taylor's question, the change in law really kind of changed our strategy on how we approach debt and the fund balance and that secondary property tax rate. One of the things that we're going to provide to you is, we've strategically tried to manage that, the amount of funds in that, in that account, in order to actually anticipate and buy down debt in future years as we issue new debt and give the voters the most economy in terms of that smoothing as we go through when we issue new debt. The state law has kind of handcuffed us with that ability, so I think we need to be very strategic on how we approach that fund balance. The questions that Councilmember Peterson is asking are very appropriate. It's just, we need to make sure as we go forward and we issue new debt for new capital, there was a question about, I want to talk about the capital improvement projects and other needs of the community. Well, we don't want to, again, and I'm just throwing out a number, which is bad to do, but we don't want to come to council saying we have all these capital needs, and now the property tax rate needs to be $1.75 because we didn't anticipate the smoothing that we were going to need to try to work our way into it so that there wasn't shock amongst the voters. And hopefully, that makes, that makes sense.
And that may be the answer, but at the same time, between Dawn and Mark, is there additional research that you think, or do we need to, as a council, accept that feedback?
I will leave it up to you, Mayor. I can, we can try to put some very basic information together and talk about some of the strategy we employ, but in terms of that finite analysis, 48 hours is probably not going to help us that much to do that.
If, maybe at the high level, whatever they could provide, go with that. Okay. So to the council on this particular subject, probably through an email, we'll get some feedback. And I will, at least on Thursday night, see if there's any additional discussion. I realize that's the benefit of a study session, is I'll quickly say, and thank you, Councilmember Peterson, for bringing it up. It's a very helpful discussion, but if we don't have enough council members that want to proceed with it, we'll know quickly on Thursday. Okay, thank you. Other budget items?
Just real quick. Can we get a quick summary on what's changed between permanent, preliminary budget, and the final? Because I noticed the dollar amount changed a little bit. Is there a summary, a quick one?
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, the preliminary budget, council established a maximum appropriation for fiscal year 2016 of about $621 million. The final budget that you see before you in your current package is at, is at about $615 million. The primary difference there, we looked at a couple, as we're fine-tuning things, anything from our debt service payments to our carryforwards of capital projects, as we fine-tune some of those numbers, you'll see some of those larger numbers have changed. So we can put together a summary of exactly where those, where those particular changes are for you, and have that available for you before Thursday.
The main reason I'm confused about it is our policy has been that any projected revenue above our planned expenditure, we just call the difference between the two as contingency. So how is the, is our projected revenue going down? Is that why our budget's going down? Doesn't make sense to me, because we always budget the remainder as contingency, whatever that difference is. So a little confusing.
So Councilmember Peterson, you're speaking of the general fund, minimum fund balance policy, and anything above the minimum fund, anticipated minimum fund balance and general fund, anything above that is budgeted in contingency to give council the legal authority to be able to spend it for any opportunities or emergencies that might come up in the next fiscal year. The budget that you see before you, though, tonight, for Thursday night, is the entire town budget, not just the general fund budget. So we've got capital projects funds, we've got debt service funds, we've got many other funds at play there, not necessarily specific to the contingency budgeting.
Thank you. Councilmember Cook? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, I'm interested in the latest FTE numbers. Have those changed, or do we have the latest count?
Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, staff recommendation is, as you saw it, on May 15.
Okay. And then, Mayor, if I could?
And to Councilmember Taylor, I know that you've had some dialogue that has been helpful with some emails. Is there anything else you wanted to ask about, or just to encourage council members to be reading those emails with some of the FTE?
I don't have anything new, any new questions, but did that go to everyone, my comments? Or, I know I sent, and I provided them to Patrick and Mayor, just to stay within open meeting laws. And if you want them, you can ask them, and he'll give them to you.
Should we, and I realize we're not wanting to.
I'm not looking to break rules. That's why I only.
Right. We don't want this meeting to go too long, but at the same time, this is our preparation for the budget. Would this be a good time, and I'll go to our town manager, to bring up some of the concerns and some of the feedback that's come, specific, I think, to the fire inspector? Or there may be others?
Yeah, there was about 10 positions that I mentioned in our previous meeting that, you know, I think we can do without and do fine. I provided a spreadsheet and just itemized each one. The fire inspector is one of them, and that wasn't the biggest one. You know, there was a number of others that really seemed to be there to nurse this new system that was supposed to give us efficiencies. So that was really the big theme of probably four or five administrative positions. Anyway, I don't know if you want to provide any follow-up or not, but.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, we're happy to discuss any of those positions, any concerns that you have here. We, too, wanted to make sure that we were respecting open meeting law and that we had any conversations you cared to have here in the public forum.
Well, I've said everything I've had. I'm not supporting a budget that has too much administrative cost. I do like the police recommendations, and certainly, there's lots of good things in there, lots of customer-facing, high-value positions in public works, some parks and recs, things like that. But things that are really just there purely administrative to nurse IT systems that are supposed to provide, I mean, that's what we were promised when we passed those. And that gap has not closed. It's not me to close that gap. I need you guys to close that gap for me to support that. That's where I'm at on that. I have another.
You have.
When we're finished here, though.
And I, before I jump to the next item, and it may be that we could, through an email from Councilmember Taylor, get those 10 items a few minutes from now on a piece of paper and have some discussion on it? Okay.
Mayor, I would actually be interested in seeing what Councilmember Taylor has prior to Thursday, if that can be information that we could review before Thursday.
And Mayor, members of the council, that would all have to be posted, because as it is a public record, discussions amongst councils sent by email would need to be available to the public at large.
So I say, we just post it. Let's post it, and then everyone can see.
Well, my question is, I know sometimes in meetings, we bring slides or charts at the council meeting. Wouldn't that be kind of similar here?
Do you have? It has to be shown publicly now, or on Thursday.
Do you have the data to show now? So? I have it on my computer. It's under the desk. I would need to print it. All right? Maybe I can.
Or, because when you show it quickly, then we can have a copy, right?
Mark's running up to get it. We could probably move on into something else.
Let's come back to that. So you had another item, please.
42, Mayor.
42?
This, and maybe we're coming back with this. This is the one that Councilmember Cook had talked about with the $1 per citizen. I guess just, the question is, is how much do we get in each of those categories today? And maybe you can just send that out later, or do you have?
Mayor, and Councilmember Taylor, I apologize. The four categories, each of them is very small in nature, and because of our restrictions with the Department of Revenue, when we have categories where we have fewer than 10 participating businesses, we're not allowed to discuss the total amounts that we collect in those categories. What we were able to do is combine those four categories together to give you the total of the $100,000.
Okay. So are we at 250? I mean, I don't know, like, is this meeting the objective that Councilmember Cook was getting? I didn't know that there was any connection here, because I can't see the numbers.
Yeah, I think the original goal was, you know, as kind of turning that dial or lever, lever, was to reach $1 per resident, was kind of the goal. And then through working and chatting with staff, with the combination of
And then through working and chatting with staff, with the combination of Agenda Item 40, that number has actually gone higher than the dollar per resident. And what number, we talk about five to six?
Dollar per resident? I can't remember the exact number, but we're going to share a chart or a PowerPoint on Thursday, was that the goal?
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, yes, you're correct. Obviously, there's some different ways that we can approach the, the property tax, and as you know, we were looking at a rate of $1.24 for this fiscal year. With Councilmember Cook's assistance, we identified the ability to apply fund balance, as Councilmember Peterson expressed earlier, something that we're trying to do wherever that makes sense here for the community. When we look at the, the combination between the, the two items, between lowering that $1.24 proposed rate to the $1.15, and the elimination of those four categories, the total impact worked out to just about $7, I believe, per Gilbert resident.
And I, and I think that that, to me, was, you know, an expectation, and what I was very thrilled that we could look at all the lever, levers and dials. It wasn't just one particular, so it really was a span across, you know, all of that, that was, you know, that you're saying. So, I'm very, very ecstatic, if I could share that.
Mayor, I appreciate the time there and the feedback, that's what I wanted to do. Are we even meeting the goal? Sounds like we are, so I'm happy with that, thank you.
Councilmember Daniels, any budget items?
None at this time.
Councilmember Peterson? So, while we see if Mark brings down that list, this is not related to the, well, okay, let's do non-budget items, and I will start with assignments for Thursday, which will be given to you in an email from, from Vicki. This would be the time for Councilmember Bridget Peterson to introduce the scouts. Pillar of the Month, we'd go to Vice Mayor Ray. Agenda Item Two, presentation of the Gilbert Score Rock would be Councilmember Cook. There's music involved, I mean. Agenda Item Number Three, the Men's Health Week, Councilmember Taylor. You know, that early morning basketball, you know? Agenda Item Number Four, Portugal Day in Gilbert. Now, if it were Japanese Day, this would be better, but Councilmember Peterson, if you could take that one. And then, the recognition of Dr. Birdwell, Councilmember Daniels. The other item that has been asked about, that I'll just jump in, is Agenda Item 29, and I don't, and this is in preparation for Thursday, this is the appeal related to the multifamily in the Heritage District. Is there a staff member that has an update on what's happening with that? Amy, please, thanks.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of Town Council. We've been working diligently with the neighbors who are the four lots that would be possibly impacted by the construction of district lots, based on the appeal that was filed. Recently, I just got an update about what the discussions have been with the different lots. Lot One, owned by the Hicks, there's been discussion about landscape, they were not inclined toward landscape and maintenance, a low wall was offered with a clip at the corner for visibility triangles. They have now indicated that they do not want anything, and we will be getting a written document from them reflecting that. Lot Two, the Lynn Property, they've agreed to the landscape that is in your packet as a mitigation member, and we do have a letter on record at this time. Lot Three, the Katy Residence, we're offered several different landscape options, have been working diligently with the landscape architect, they do have a revised plan, it is reflected in your packet, and we should be getting a letter of acceptance from them in the near future. The Figaroas of Lot Four went through several different options, everything from landscape to removable trees to window screens, and they have now decided they do not want anything, and we will be receiving a letter from them indicating as such.
Can you remind us, one of those four seems to have the most impact with cars going there, is that one or is that four?
Lot Three.
Lot Three?
Lot Three, the Katy Residence, is the residence that is directly opposite the exit gate, or the exit, the main exit of the district loft, a multifamily facility, and they, as I said, have indicated that they are supporting the recent design, and I will say that they, as well as, I believe, the Hicks, have also indicated that they would potentially support a variation of the ingress and egress for the property, which in your packet is options one through four as represented.
Okay, thank you. So, in preparation for Thursday night, is there additional information or questions any of you would like to ask? Okay, all right, thank you. In addition to coming back and talking about the FTE positions on the budget, any other agenda items for Thursday night that we would like to have discussed today? Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you. And maybe this is just more of a question, Melanie, I'm looking at you over there, 13. I'm not looking for a presentation, this is the MAG grant. I've just wanted to get a little bit more information on the federal funding on this one. There's some transportation dollars that come from the federal government that I support, and I'd just like to know if this is one of those. So, maybe just a little more explanation on that. I know also with grants, Mayor, we've asked to just understand if any strings attached to it, maybe there isn't, maybe just a line, and just let me know what obligations we might be signing up for, but generally supportive of the, of the idea, would just like to learn a little bit more about, you know, that sentence that says the primary source is federal transportation dollars, so.
Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, yes, as I noted in the council communication, this is federal transportation dollars that funds the program, and they are allowing it for some different categories of use, and so we would be applying under the bicycle and pedestrian access, pedestrian facilities category. And the requirements that we would have in regards to utilizing the money is that a consultant is used from the on-call list from MAG, because it is run through MAG, and then the completed design would become the property of both applicant and MAG, so it does stay within the realm of the MAG operation, but we would work through that process, but the dollars are coming from the federal transportation. But the only things that we have to do in terms of match is just have staff time and the data available to apply.
Thank you, does that help?
Yeah.
And now, I'm curious, is that funding that you do support or not support?
I'm going to research it a little bit. You know, the gas tax money that comes from our citizens should come right back to our citizens, things like that, things that they take directly out of the state. Where it's coming from somewhere else, it's kind of fuzzy, is where I start to ask questions, so. I think that's enough for me to dig into that. If I could just make one other comment on that, well, actually, I'll save it for, for council, it's probably a better time to comment on it, but I generally support the project and the item.
Okay, thank you. And back to the council, any other items on Thursday night's agenda that we'd like to have discussed in today's study session? Okay, so we're at that point, I think we just have the one last item, and Councilmember Cook?
I do would like to have clarification, maybe with, with Patrick and our, our legal counsel, on Agenda Item 12, which is related to the, the hearing. Do, are we under a gag order, or how's that work? If this is, you know, does the council have the ability to, to chat with residents of Trilogy, or what's the, what's the proper protocol? Because I know that I received a phone call from a resident there, and I know, I just want to make sure that if we need to speak to the resident prior to accepting this on the council meeting, what, what's kind of the protocol for us?
Mayor, members, Councilman Cook, the protocol for this Thursday is merely to have a motion and a vote on the motion, whether to entertain a hearing on the 25th, and not discuss the merits of the case, as, as to who should, you know, how the appeal ought to be, how, how the appeal ought to be decided.
So, if we obviously will probably vote in favor of the appeal, does that mean, at that point, we cannot interact with any of the individuals that are...
Mayor, Councilman Cook, yes, at that point, you, you've assumed a quasi-judicial posture, and that any communications you have with them should be had also. I think they should only be an open session with both sides present.
So, it sounds like the recommendation is, if I was to receive a phone call, I should do that before Thursday, if I wanted to interact with the...
If you intend to, if you intend to vote for a hearing, then I would suggest not entertaining such a phone call even before Thursday.
Oh.
And then simply, and simply state, and simply state that this is, this will be a quasi-judicial proceeding on June 25th, and I'm sorry, we can't discuss it.
Now, that set of questions is most helpful, and so let me interact with Town Attorney Hamlin for a minute. The citizens that I've been interacting with, there was a desire to get together, and it just hadn't happened. And so, after the vote Thursday, I guess I intended to still meet with them. Now, if I meet with them, when you say both sides, what does that mean? Does that mean having our town attorney present, or does that mean they have to talk to you?
Mayor, members of council, generally that would mean, in a, since it is a quasi-judicial legal proceeding, it would mean, like, in a regularly scheduled meeting televised, so the public could hear it. So, essentially, that means that it couldn't happen.
Okay.
You know, typically, a judge, if, if, you know, if two parties have something they wish to present to a judge, they can do it in the judge's chambers, and, and that would be, the attorneys for both sides would be present, so no one side is telling something to the judge the other side can't hear. That would also apply in this instance. But that's usually for procedural matters or strictly legal matters, and since there's a hearing, there will likely be a hearing scheduled on June 25th. And there's other than discussions with town staff as to how the procedure ought to proceed, or with the mayor on how the procedure ought to proceed, there's, there's really nothing else to be discussed.
So, on the importance of that question, that's a 10.
It's really once they filed the protest, that's when all communication really has to stop.
Yes.
Well said.
Mike, thank you, because you've, could have prevented me from getting in trouble, but thank you. Not to say, I still won't have that problem, but thank you.
Mayor, Councilmember Cook, you're welcome, of course.
I'd love it if you could prevent me getting in trouble. Can you help me with that?
With everybody except Mrs. Peterson.
Enough is Mrs. Peterson.
So, thank you, let's come back to budget discussion. This is some feedback that Councilmember Taylor has interacted with staff on, and now we're able to let all council members see it. Do you want to take a few minutes and walk through it? Councilmember Taylor?
Really, the, thank you, Mayor, the spreadsheet is the summary there, you can see the column. There, there's a lot of more categories there. There's a couple items that I would just like to know if we could contract those out versus having those as full-time FTEs. I think there's some savings opportunities there, I'm really just starting the discussion there. There's a number of them that I'm just flat okay with, and those are listed as just okay. There's some that I don't, I don't see enough value for us to commit, and those are listed out as no, you can see the comments there. And then there's some that I didn't see the justification on them, I mean, notionally, from what I see here, like a utility worker, you know, those are probably something that I would support, because we want to keep, you know, the utilities fixed and up to date and so forth, we're growing and things like that. I just didn't see that in that big, thick justification packet, and so I was just asking for a little bit more information on that. So, Mayor, that's the summary. The other page is really just color commentary, this, the spreadsheet's the play-by-play. The spreadsheet has the important information, and the others is just, just kind of rounding it out, but, but other budgetary discussions, not related to the FTE, and a lot of it I've already covered, or it's a discussion for another time on the budget. And Mayor...
That's some good commentary, though, that last bullet, too, priority to our citizens, so. Back to the FTEs, as you look at this, well, let's go to the council members as you, as you look at this, do you have some questions that you might want to have discussed? Councilmember Daniels?
I just want to point out that we did set a policy, not too long ago, about what we expected when it came to citizen count versus employees, and, and I really don't feel like I'm in a position necessarily to judge the actual need or the intimate value to our citizens from, let's just say, a water conservation technician or a utility worker. But we did set those parameters, right, for our staff to say, we want you to stay below, I think we said 5.7 employees per thousand residents. Recognizing that as the community grows, some of the needs will grow, I'm not, I don't think I could go to bat for every single position that I see listed here. I'm not intimately involved in the day-to-day operations of the town, nor as policymakers necessarily are we supposed to be, you know, down in the weeds. So, I think it's, it's good to know exactly what's going on. At what point do we say, let's let the policy lead, and let's let the administration determine where those positions are best served? I'm just thinking from a policy perspective, it's easy to go, you know, line by line, but from a policy perspective and a policymaker's perspective, at what point do we just say, keep us within this level, this is what we consider as an organization to be acceptable, you put the people where they need to be, and recognize too, that there should be some economies of scale that you bring up, and rightfully so, on a, whenever we talk about the budget, that there should be some economies of scale, that not for every thousand residents you're going to need to add a, a full-time employee or five employees, but I, you might remember, I asked for that information. How much have we grown from a population perspective over the last six years? And how much has our staff grown versus what it did from 2000 to 2006? And I was frankly shocked. Our employee, full-time employee count since 2009, so 2009 to 2015, has grown by 1%, while our population has grown 14.2%. Year previous, 2000 to 2006, our population grew by 61%, and our full, Gilbert full-time employee count grew by 55.3%. I just, from a policy perspective, when do we sort of let the administration take those, those reins?
Councilmember Taylor?
Mayor, thank you, I think Councilmember Daniels brings up some, some valid points. And I guess, just a couple of follow-up on, on that. Number one, I think if we have, if we've seen some things that we should give feedback to the town on, and when they're asking for some, I think that's one of the exceptions to that. I think generally, she's right. Generally, we need to set some policy level ratios and targets, and I think that's great. The other trend here, like I mentioned, is when you see some inconsistencies, I think, since we're talking about budgets and increasing staff, and those are commitments on the taxpayer, you know, I think that's the time when we can open the patient and, and, but as a general rule, absolutely, we should be more at the policy level. I think these are reasonable exceptions to that. I'll give you an example on that. You know, you know, I've worked at Motorola and Honeywell. Motorola is like gone, and Honeywell is thriving. And one of the major differences in those corporations, which is a very similar structure to our form of government, is the Board of Directors at Motorola did not watch that head count, whereas Honeywell, oh my goodness, it is the number one thing, your accounting head count on, almost monthly. It's, it's a ridiculous amount that they count, head count. But because their Board of Directors are so interested in that, and that permeates the culture in that, I mean, that, that company has, you know, increased their market value three to four X, you know, over the last, you know, period of time during down economies, whereas the other company has been split off and sold off, and they're still doing, still doing a lot of great things. But I guess that's, that's the background I'm coming from, and I see when a Board of Directors has a fiscal responsibility, and when the discussion's there, it's time to offer feedback, and maybe it's the HR background of me coming out and, you know, getting into personnel, but those are some thoughts.
And I think that's really important, I think it's also important to note, though, that we're the Honeywell Board of Directors. I mean, we've been, we've been watching that head count like hawks, and you can see, I should probably put this up so you guys can see it, but you can see that our labor force actually declined from 2009 to 2011, and only since growth has gone back up are we adding employees, and I, I feel like our check and balance really is that policy, so if, if you're uncomfortable with the policy at 5.7, should the policy be at 5.5?
I'm just suggesting that the policy, I support the policy, but I don't think it should ham, you know, handcuff us for giving point feedback when there's the opportunity. After the budget discussion goes along, you know, Patrick and I have regular meetings, I'm not hand-picking him on, on head count. I'm not hand-picking him on head count a lot. I'll give him feedback here or there, but he knows that this is when the feedback, this is when the agenda's on, this is when I give feedback, and, you know, once we set it, we go.
Please don't, and please don't take that as criticism for this type of feedback. That's certainly not what I'm intending. What I am intending to say is, are we really in a position to know, intimately know, whether we need another street supervisor or not? I've never worked streets. You've never worked streets. And the fact that our executive team has gone around and around and around in a very detailed, months-long conversation to determine that that really is one of the highest priorities in the community, at what point do we say, we're going to trust you guys as long as you stay within what we've set as the policy level for what positions are most needed within the organization? And I think, so it's not criticism on these line-by-line, absolutely, this is when we should be having that type of dialogue. But at what point do we say, we're trusting our executive team to make that type of determination, particularly as they've narrowed it down and as they stay within our policy recommendation, our policy requirement, it's not even a recommendation?
Ken, did you want to say something?
Yes. Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to add information more particularly to a couple positions that you are concerned about, where the reference is not too little value to our citizens. One in particular is the engineering modeler. Currently, as the information submitted to you reflected, when we need to model our water, wastewater, our storm system, we utilize the services of a consultant. The challenge that we have with that, when we face emergencies, when we have to move water around, when there is an emergency response, where we need an immediate response to the model, we're not in a capacity right now to do that. Our engineering modeler will not only allow us real-time to be able to model our systems to see if we lost, God forbid, but if we lost the north plant, and we had to relocate water through our wells, through San Ten Vista plant, and in and around the system to provide effective service for our customers, that engineering model gives us the ability to do that right now. It also gives us the ability as things change. So if it was a static model to where you could set it, fix it, and you go, then we would be able to do that. But this type of model gives us the flexibility. Another component is we're required to maintain an emergency response in all of our effective systems where we provide that service, whether it's water, wastewater, or storm. And that model gives us the ability to effectively do that. When we look at new developments coming into our community, having that modeler available gives us the ability to partner with economic development. So when they have a particular customer that wants to come into our community, we can say immediately or within a reasonable amount of time that we know we have the capacity there, or maybe that area's not good, this is another one. Another good example is our water conservation technician. In light of the ever-so-changing reality that we face with droughts, this position is established to assist our customers in finding ways to really reduce their water usage, to trim the abuses of water that we typically have, leaking faucets, just a general layout of being more mindful of how we utilize water and reducing our water waste. And so this position is specifically designed to be actively engaged in that endeavor. And it's not an endeavor where you can just do it. It's not an endeavor where you can contract it out, because this is something that's specific to the town, and it's consistent with some of the things that you all have mandated us to do, and that is to look for ways, effective ways, to provide the best service for our customer. Now, when we conserve water, we save, and we gain and reduce the amount of water used as well as we increase the availability of water we have moving forward. What is not talked about a great deal, and it's a slightly different subject, that drought that we see in California, it is migrating this way, and it's a reality. And this gives us a better ability to be able to capture that. I can go into more detail on some of the other ones, but I just wanted to use those as a couple examples where they do provide an effective value to our responsibilities of providing that service to our customers.
Thank you. And, Don, I say this is a compliment to you, because I did see this process, but I know you're pretty tough. And positions to be approved even to this level took a lot of justification and so forth, and so that was a nice filter, and we appreciate that from a council perspective. I, I think Councilmember Taylor's comments, and using Motorola and Honeywell is a great example, and we appreciate it. I think also the policy reminder, and I guess I'm going to merge these two and say, it is appropriate to have some dialogue with this, and that helps with the justification. But from a position we're at today and going ahead with the budget, we can probably, unless council members want to get in details, we're probably ready to move forward. But the Councilmember Taylor, if he's requested to get some more justification, I support that. And if you see a red flag on something, please share with us, because Motorola Honeywell example is a prime real-time example. But we're also, a reminder to us, we're wanting to stay at the policy level. We're in that range. We thank you for your efforts. You've been pretty tough, but friendly tough. So if we were to, at this point, let Councilmember Taylor kind of direct traffic on positions that he would like more justification for, I'm just going to ask, that'd be a high priority, have that discussion. If there's something you did want to bring up on Thursday night, we'll give you that option. If you feel like it's been addressed, we'll stay at the policy level.
Mayor, one thing I find may, just to add for the edification of all the council and the public that might be looking at the, at the council packet, we put together, as a staff, we put together budget packages this year. So where it might be a little confusing is you're not going to see a separate budget package for each individual position, because in some cases, we required a team. So you'll see a senior utility worker, two utility workers, for example, in a single budget package for that particular team. And you'll see the justification there as it relates to the fire hydrant inspections and valves. So if you find, in looking at your package, I'm happy to direct you to those, to those places. If there are specific areas where you need additional information, obviously, staff is more than happy to help, and I apologize for any misunderstanding that might have occurred.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Mayor, I just wanted to say, I appreciate the conversation, and I generally agree as well. I'm looking at high-level metrics. I dig into as many items as I can, but at the end of the day, there's a certain amount of information I just don't have access to. And so back to the high level, the FTE count hasn't given me as much heartburn as the ongoing expenditures versus ongoing revenues, more of that discussion. And so I think for me, that's, and I think Jared has similar thoughts, is that when we see at a high level, there's some concern there, then we start drilling into specific items, seeing, well, which ones could maybe we go without, or I don't know, but we've got a, we've got a problem at even the high level where the metrics are. And so, so I appreciate those comments. I think we're, have a similar approach to the process.
Thank you. County Manager Banter?
Mayor, I won't belabor the discussion. It's been good, and we're more than happy to get you additional information in regards to each position, and it's probably in there, to Dawn's point. She'll make sure she can highlight that for you in the appropriate locations. Just for everybody's understanding of how we measure what we're doing and how we put our budgets together, and Gilbert, it does go through an incredible amount of scrutiny as we look at our operations, our service levels, our service level demands each year in a growing community, and try to, and Gilbert has been one of the leaders in benchmarking efforts around the region with other communities who look and feel very similar to us. We also benchmark against some, some national communities that we feel like are really exhibiting some of those high-quality, best-in-class type of, of operations for the services they deliver. But as we build our budgets, budgets, and as we look to create efficiencies and maximize the quality of our services, we look at things that are currently contracted out in which we think we can do to a higher level of quality, of expediency, efficiency, of cost, because many contractors, depending on what the service is being provided to the town, is actually more expensive. Once we reach a certain level of reliance upon that service, that it actually makes sense for us to bring that in-house and realize those savings to our customers. We do try to always look at what that net output is to the residents. So for many positions, they do, on face value, look very forward-facing, and those frontline staff that touch our residents the most. But behind the scenes, there's many of these positions, as you look at them and as you evaluate them, that actually do provide that value to our residents, but they don't appear to have that front-facing look to them, that they are in support service-type of areas, IT and others, that allow those front-level staff or those frontline staff to actually be effective in what they do and provide them with the tools to provide the service they do. So we just wanted to give you, I just wanted to give you a confidence that all of these positions are scrubbed intensely at a peer, within the departments, at a peer level on the executive team, then through Dawn and her budget team, and then lastly, through Mark and I, before they ever reach you. There are many things that never even reach the evaluation stage through the budget process with the executive team, because it's either nixed early on as an idea that really doesn't make sense, or it's just not right, the right fit for our community. But getting up to that policy level, and what you look for from us is we've always held the line on our fees for service and our taxes. Our residents haven't seen a rate increase. In fact, they saw a rate decrease two years and go in solid ways, but haven't seen a rate increase in any of our utilities, I think, since 2008 was our last. And we have held the line on our taxes, and in fact, try to find ways where appropriate in balancing those interests of proper fund balance versus what can we, what can we do to help smooth out some of those increases, as we've talked about tonight, with our secondary property tax, in putting some of that fund balance to work in a, in a balanced manner that we think weighs all the interests in charge. And looking at our FTE count, and Councilmember Daniels pointed out, that it is a number and it is a metric to be analyzed, and it is something that helps us establish where we're at versus our peer communities, but it's not the, the total driver, it's not the end result that we want to ever hold ourselves accountable to. Because as we've talked about, development in a fast-growth community is lumpy, and there are times when we'll bring a new fire station onboard, that's going to drive personnel costs, which is going to make that year seem out of whack. And so it's an important metric, but it's not the only metric we do, but we do use it to get a feel for, are we keeping all interests in check in delivering the highest quality services at the best possible cost? So we just wanted to ensure you that that is occurring. We're more than happy to answer questions as we come to you and ask for you to add personnel to our payroll. We understand the short and long-term implications for that, and we do take all of that into consideration as we prepare the budget for your consideration on a annual basis.
Thank you. So to the council, thank you. And to all town team members, a very helpful, important study session in preparing us for Thursday. Did we miss anything before we close? Study session adjourned. Thank you.
I would like to see justification. I didn't, I didn't, but I didn't see.